I would like to call to order our September 23rd, 2021, School Board Work Session of the Henrico County Public School Board. I'd like to welcome everyone here today. The first item on the agenda is the actual approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
It has been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same right. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is a closed meeting. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees? A request for release from compulsory attendance and request for religious exemption from compulsory education.
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees and specific matters that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pertaining to a request for release from compulsory attendance and request for religious exemption from compulsory education.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. It has been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We are now in closed session. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best each, to the best of each school board's member knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed session meeting we heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the closed session has been certified. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the first item, I am seeking your approval of the appointments of administrative personnel.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of administrative personnel?
I move that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The administrative appointments are approved.
Thank you. The board has just approved Eileen Cox, Chief of Communications, Kenya Jackson, Talent Acquisition Ambassador in the Department of Human Resources, Amy Ferry, Associate Principal with our Henrico Virtual Academy, Joy Knighton as Assistant Principal at Quiocasen Middle School, and Cheryl Astoria as Exceptional Education Specialist within the Department of Exceptional Education. I'd also like to note, while this individual is currently an administrator, so not part of the administrative appointments, but in a new seat, you will notice that Adrienne Cole Johnson is now seated with our Division Leadership Team. So I'd like to welcome Adrienne as Chief of Family and Community Engagement. Welcome.[227.40][227.40](APPLAUSE). Her very proud team, and of course, we're all wishing you well. All right. So that concludes items from the administrative appointments. I am asking that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for student case number 21-22-CA-1. And of course, the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion to approve the request for release from compulsory attendance?
I move that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for student case number 21-22-CA-1.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Consella, and thank you so much, Mrs. Ogborne. Is the ayes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Sorry.
The ayes have it. The request for release from compulsory attendance has been approved.
Thank you. Also recommending that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for student case number 21-22-Re-1 for bona fide religious beliefs.
Is there a motion to approve the requests for release from compulsory attendance?
I move that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for student case numbers 21-22-Re1, 21-22-Re2, 21-22-Re3 based on bona fide religious beliefs.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea.
Mr. Chair, hold on one second.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ogborne.
We have a question.
Well, I provided one case rather than a block of cases. I was under the assumption they had to be taken individually. Can they be taken as a block?
They could be taken individually.
I'll reread what I... You would prefer they be done individually. Okay. So we're just for this one, you're approving case number 21-22-Re1?
And so there are three of them, so we're going to just take the motion. Is there a motion to approve the request for release from compulsory attendance?
And Mrs. Shea has already done one, so we need to vote on that one, correct?
Is there a second to Ms. Shea's motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Ms. Ogborne and Ms. Shea. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The request for release from compulsory attendance based on bona fide religious beliefs has been approved.
Thank you. Also seeking release from compulsory attendance for student case number 21-22-Re2.
Is there a motion to approve the request for release from compulsory attendance?
I move that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for student case number 21-22-Re2.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the request for release from compulsory attendance based on bona fide religious beliefs has been approved.
Thank you. And the last one, I'm seeking release from compulsory attendance for student case number 21-22-Re3 based on bona fide religious beliefs.
Is there a motion to approve the requests for release from compulsory attendance?
I move that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance for case number 21-22-Re3.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the request for release from compulsory attendance based on bona fide religious beliefs have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the next item, I do have for the board an update on health and safety conditions from our HCPS Health Committee. Dr. Tighgen, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I am happy to be back again this afternoon to share some exciting updates from the HCPS Health Committee. Today's agenda includes the current transmission level for Henrico, recent changes to quarantine timelines, an update on contact tracing, and vaccination status and how that goes into So we will start with the transmission level. On Monday, the Health Committee reviewed the current health data for Henrico County. Two weeks ago, I shared the transmission level was high in Henrico, and as of this last Monday, we remain at that high level. Based on the seven-day data from September 12th to the 18th, the number of new cases per 100,000 was 231.8, and the percentage of PCR tests that were positive was 6.4%. And as we begin to look at the level of school impact, as of the posting of this data, there have been over 100 positive cases and four outbreaks. That's been since August 27th. The school impact would be considered low, but this data combined with the transmission level in the last slide would still maintain Henrico at an overall status of high transmission. And this is consistent with the rest of the state, as if you look at the graphic on the VDH website or the CDC website, you will see Virginia is all red. When we look at ours, just so we go through, not only have we looked at the number of outbreaks, we do see that student absenteeism is slightly above our baseline, and our staff capacity is strained. So with this combination of the increase in the number of cases and transitioning the contact tracing to the Richmond-Henrico Health Districts to utilize their 20 contact tracers, you'll notice that's three more from what we shared two weeks ago, additional time is needed to reconcile data prior to posting it on the division's COVID data dashboard. The dashboard will be updated weekly. Schools will submit the total number of positive cases and the number of close contacts within their school each Friday, with the update to the website being no later than Monday. Please note, this does not impact the notification to families of close contacts. Those calls will still be made in real time. Moving forward, community emails will be sent on a weekly basis. The data, the number of positive cases, and the number of close contacts will be shared each week as part of the principal's weekly communication with families before posting that information to the HCPS website for the larger communities on Mondays. The bottom line is, we want to maintain transparency with our staff, our families, and our community while also ensuring accuracy in our reporting. Those calls to those who may be close contacts will continue to be made as soon as possible. So let's review where we are with contact tracing and quarantining. At the last school board meeting, I shared that quarantining protocols would be modified. While adhering to the VDH and CDC guidelines, we reduced the quarantine time for close contacts from 14 days to 10 days. Unvaccinated or partially vaccinated people identified as a close contact are required to stay home, monitor for symptoms, and follow all mitigation recommendations, to include wearing a mask, watching their distance, and washing their hands frequently. In addition, if an unvaccinated or partially vaccinated individual gets a negative PCR or rapid test performed on or after day five, they may now return to school on day eight as long as they are asymptomatic. The guidance for fully vaccinated people for COVID-19 has not changed. They do not need to quarantine as long as they do not have symptoms. However, they should monitor for symptoms and follow all mitigation, meaning fully vaccinated people should still get tested three to five days after a close contact exposure, and wear a mask when in public indoor settings for 14 days or until they receive a negative test. There have been numerous questions about the contact tracing process, so I thought it would be good to provide an overview. Given the need to know when someone identified as a close contact is fully vaccinated, the Health Committee and leadership team agreed that we will ask parents or legal guardians of students and our staff to share their vaccination status if they are willing. This will help streamline the contact tracing process by allowing us to verify vaccination information ahead of any potential contact tracing. As a reminder, we do currently ask individuals to disclose vaccination status as a part of the contact tracing process. This new step would proactively gather this information to speed up the contact tracing process. There is a small committee working on the logistics on the best process to proactively gather this information. Equally as important as understanding vaccination status for contact tracing is the implementation of screening and testing. As we've shared in previous updates, we have been actively pursuing ways we can implement testing as a part of our mitigation plans. Testing can serve as additional mitigation strategies intended to be combined or layered with other prevention strategies such as masking, vaccination, and physical distancing with the goal of maintaining the health and safety of students and staff and the continuation of in-person learning. As you are aware, we have been exploring the use of Virginia School Screening Testing for Assurance Program, which is referred to as the Vista Program. This program is a collaboration between the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education. The goal of the Vista Program is to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission in schools through the early identification of COVID-19 cases and prompt public health action to contain outbreaks. At the core of the Vista Program is vendor-conducted screening tests. Screening testing is routine testing of individuals who do not have COVID-like symptoms or a known exposure to COVID. COVID testing is primarily intended for students and will be voluntary. Only students whose parents or legal guardians consent will be tested. The program can also be used to test staff. A study conducted by Mathematica, supported by the Rockefeller Foundation, found that weekly testing of all students, teachers, and staff can reduce in-school infections by an estimated 50%. Just this past Tuesday, so two days ago, Vista provided a new testing option to school divisions called Binex Now Ag Card Home Test Kits. Yesterday, Henrico County Public Schools opted into this program and formally requested our test kits. These test kits are intended to be sent home with students or staff. For example, for a student who is sent home from school through the clinic with COVID-like symptoms, they could take a kit home to test themselves to be able to return to school. The parent or legal guardian would use the kit in conjunction with a medical professional using a telehealth service to ensure accuracy of the sample collection. There is no cost to the family or the employee. Again, we have already signed up and should be receiving an initial shipment of 2,500 test kits. We would ask that everyone stay tuned for more information on screening and testing. And at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that board members may have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tighgen. I'm going to start to my left from Ms. Atkins.
So thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm so pleased to learn more about our efforts around the screening process as well as offering at-home kits for families. I know I have received several phone calls around the protocols when a child goes to the clinic, and the nurse has to assess the child, whether it's for a headache or a tummy ache, and they have to follow the protocols. But what this at-home kit will allow is for the nurse to give them the kit, you take it home, and instead of having to go to a doctor and pay a co-pay and take time off of work, you'll be able to, with TeleMed, give your child a kit and test them right at home so that they can return to school. And I think, you know, one of the things that I hear most often from parents is, you know, the purpose of the school is to educate, but if they're at home for 10 days, 14 days, or simultaneously because you have someone else in the home with COVID, they're missing instruction. So this is certainly a great way to reduce the amount of time that a child is not in school. I also want to share a few other thoughts that families have shared with me, and I don't know if you have your pen and paper ready so that you can jot them down. But the first one is revisiting the mitigation strategies for our athletic programs. And so at a leadership level, really taking a good look at the schedule, understanding we do have some historical history on games and particular programs that generate a lot of activity. So taking a look at that and better understanding what else can we do. I'm happy to share, I know that we were pursuing electronic tickets, and so that is another great way to be innovative and keep up with the times so that we don't have the large crowds trying to purchase tickets and then exchanging money. So I want us to continue to look at different ways that we can be smart around our athletic programs. The other one is around revisiting training on how to properly wear a mask. I know we received, myself and many other families received, the latest email that talked about properly fitted masks. I don't want us to assume that everyone knows what that means, so I'd really like the leadership team to take another look at how we can share what the definition of that is and actually a visual on what that looks like. Oftentimes, when you're put on a mask, you think it fits fine until you have to speak for a while. And so really revisit and understand what a properly fitted mask mean in different situations and different scenarios. And then the last one is to please continue to emphasize the importance of if an adult or child feels ill, an adult meaning an employee within Henrico County Public Schools, or a child and student that attend our schools, if you are feeling ill, to stay at home and to find ways to make families feel comfortable sharing that they or a child does not feel well without feeling judged. So I really would like more emphasis on how to do that and how to make families feel more comfortable sharing that their child is ill. And then on another note, this is not COVID-related, but our Health Committee meets quite often, and the topic is COVID-19. But I'm interested in my colleagues' thoughts on another topic, particularly around social media and its health impacts on children. And this is something that I think it's time to have the conversation about. Our current Health Committee does talk about social and emotional well-being, but as you can imagine, COVID definitely takes the majority of time in our meetings. And I think that, you know, I've been reading a few studies on this topic, and particularly the American Psychology Psychological Association shared that it has many, it being social media has many positive impacts on children, whether it's being connected. I know there are introverts that enjoy it because they connect and can hide behind a screen, but some of the negative impacts, what I am seeing particularly is around aggressive behavior. So there are students that are building relationships with individuals online, and you'll see the results of how they're feeling at the bus stop or in the school or in the community because they've built this virtual connection that may not be the best connection. And then when they encounter and come face-to-face with other students, you may start seeing aggressive behaviors. And so, and I can share more about some of the studies that I've read, but I'm very interested in my colleagues' thoughts around building a committee with individuals from each district to talk about and learn more about what we could do to assist with the impact of children's health in social media. And so Chairman, I'll turn the floor to you. I don't know if we want to do that now, or we can do that later, but I'm interested in learning more about your thoughts.
We can, we can discuss that with the superintendent and figure out, you know, if we want to move forward with something like that outside of the purview of the current agenda topic.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Madam, Ms. Ogborne?
Thank you. Dr. Tighgen, thank you so much for our update. I think all of us have gotten quite a few emails this week about various questions, concerns, whatever, related to just outbreaks, kids getting sick, being concerned. I've had a number of parents say, I think it's just a cold. And I've had to share with them that myself, having, and just very personal, in the last three, last week and a half, fighting that kind of thing too. I've been tested three times in the last week just to be sure. And it's kind of the world we live in right now, so I'm really glad that we are looking at the ability to help parents with testing. If you could, though, one thing, I have had a number of parents ask, can they go to their local pharmacy, Walgreens, CVS, whatever it is, and obtain the take-home test? Does that count?
Yes, they can.
You could specifically, I know the answer, but say it out loud so that everybody...
Yes, they can, they can use that. You know, I know there's concern about validity. That's one of the positives of the new test kits would be, you know, the fact that it has support and assistance. But yes, they should, they should be accepting those.
Okay, because I've had actually a couple of parents say, I did the at-home test and it wasn't accepted at my school. And so I think maybe we, there's some, this confusion on this particular topic. So if we could get just maybe to our school nurses and our school staff individually, that a test that you take home from the pharmacy can be accepted, that would be great. And two, just will our flow chart be updated with the new testing possibilities and requirements?
It actually is already updated.
It is updated?
It's been on the website for over a week.
Okay, that's great. Because the one I have in my hand is the old one.
It's been about a week and a half. You'll see it down here where we've changed...
That's great. So parents should look for that date at the bottom?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's great.
They look at the date at the bottom and communications sent out in their weekly newsletter to families and to staff. It included the link to be able to get them directly to this flow chart.
Okay, and I know I've already told you this, but just bring it out for others to know, there is some confusion, I think, out there about the ability to test children under the age of 16. I've had a couple of parents say, my child is 13, the requirement is it's for emergency use only. I don't know if you had anything you could share with us about that.
Testing or vaccination?
Pardon?
You said testing or vaccine.
Vaccination.
Okay, I just figured with the age, you probably...
And obviously, I'm telling parents, you consult with your own physician to get the latest in what's right for your child, but I do get this question a lot from parents.
Absolutely. You know, it has been until, you know, recently that those 12 and older could access the vaccine. I know that they're still waiting for the rest of the process to go through for the five to 11-year-olds, but they anticipate that being available in the very near future. You know, it, well, I say very near future, they, you know, some, some of the information from people who are involved in the processes have said it could be as late as late October, which we know would mean it's really about winter break before they're fully vaccinated.
Completely vaccinated.
But for 12 and older, they are, those vaccines are available to them. It has to be a Pfizer. That's the only manufacturer that those, that is approved for 12 to 17, 12 to 16-year, or I guess it's 12 to 15-year-olds.
Right, that's what I thought. And so there is, I think, it's a difficult time for everyone. I mean, we're all going through it together, is the way I kind of talk to parents about it, because there is no one person who escapes this thing. And, but what would you recommend for parents if they have questions, they're frustrated by the quarantine procedure at their particular school, or if they see a difference? That's the other question I'm getting a lot. Something's happening at one school that's not happening at another. What advice would you give for that parent who has questions or concerns about how this quarantining or testing is being done at a particular school?
And maybe understanding that with our relationship with the Health Department, when there is a positive case, it, that, that the school is aware of, it's going into a Google form. And that information then, depending on whether it's a community case, if it's a community case, it's being handled by our part-time contact tracers. If it is a school-based case, then it's going to the Health Department. The Health Department cannot start working on them until they have all of the close contacts, which is, you know, we've put a timeline of 24 hours that we're trying to get everything out of our school and into the hands of school health services so that things can be entered into what's called the Red Cap Program, which sends it on to the Health Department. And then once it goes to the Health Department, their contact tracers are working on them. So they should get a call. One of the most significant feedback we're hearing from the Health Department is their, and this is the Richmond-Henrico Health Department, not the Virginia Department of Health, which oversees the Richmond-Henrico Health Districts. So, you know, when, when they, when they do try to contact our parents, a lot of times, you know, either your people are ignoring it because it's a number they don't know, and they're not able, their voicemails are full or not set up, and so that makes it difficult. And we've been working with our partners at the Richmond-Henrico Health Districts to talk about how can we help with that process to make sure our parents are knowing to answer those calls, or how can we make that contact so that we're sure that they know. The other thing is, both... The other thing is both our School Health Services and the Health Department, the Richmond-Henrico Health Districts, are being inundated with calls because, you know, as soon as a parent knows, they're starting to call. And so it's, it really is clogging up the system. And so, you know, we know that if there's been a close contact, that the earliest they are going to come back is eight days from that contact. And so, you know, we've kind of talked about that on day seven, recommending if they haven't heard, please reach out to our School Health Services or their school to make sure that they're raising that issue up, that they have not heard from the contact tracers at the Health Department. And so, you know, and then that, in that case, we have been intervening and our health, our contact tracers and health professionals are taking over and providing that information because we do want kids back in school. We don't want them out any longer than they need to be.
And as far as that goes with the contact tracing, do you, I think you said this already, but I'll ask you to repeat yourself. How many contact tracers do we have currently?
We have really, I would say, three part-time. We have two that are 29 hours a week and another one that's now spending two days a week. And the Virginia, the Health Department has gone up from 17 to 20 for the Richmond-Henrico Districts.
Are they able to keep up with the demand that?
Well, we're, we're monitoring that. We're meeting with our Health Department partners, you know, two or three times a week right now to try to make sure that processes are working, that information is flowing, and that progress is being made.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. And again, if they have, if parents have questions about this process, they, I've been suggesting they get in touch with the school nurse. I'm not sure that's the right answer. But if they have a question about or a concern about the process at their individual school, who at the school would you recommend that they get in touch with?
I would probably recommend that they call the front office and leave a message saying that they have, you know, that is what the concern is and that's, you know, there are multiple people that could answer. And from school to school, it differs probably with what the capacity is between the nurse and the administrators.
Right. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogden. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I just have a couple of questions for you today, Dr. Tiggen. But before I want to get started, I want to thank you for just the tremendous work you've been doing behind the scenes, just all hours of the day and night, but just the multiple iterations that you've been going through with the Health Department and our administrators to try to make this process as efficient as possible. And so because of you, we've been able to process so many more kids so more quick, or so much more quickly. And so.
It's, it's not just me though. It's the team, it is that School Health Services team and Christina Vittek, their director, that have been instrumental in making this all happen.
And you spear, and the whole team, but you spearheaded all that. And I just want everybody to know how appreciative we are of you and the whole team. And, you know, speaking of the whole team, with our school-based staff, our school nurses and our school administrative teams, they have taken on a significant burden in contact tracing in order to process our students more quickly, which it's so important that our students are processed quickly because that's how we are able to quarantine things before they spread, but also to clear students so they can get back in the building and learning is just so imperative. And I know there are a lot of frustrations with our parents, but I just want to say loud and clearly that yelling and berating these people at our school offices that are trying their best to contact our, our students, that is not benefiting anyone. And so let's just, it is all hard right now. We are all doing our best, parents and staff alike. And so as, if we can progress through this with just respect and appreciation for each other, that'd be great. All right. So, Dr. Tiggen, can you just walk us through so we can understand the process when there's a positive case? And you outlined earlier the difference between, what's the difference between, what designated as a community case versus a school case to start with?
A community case would come from something in the community. Like our children might end up being COVID-positive, but it came from a contact that was at like a athletic, a community athletic association. Or it could have been their after-school care program. And so, you know, it, the source of the original, what the contact was or the original source of the case that they're currently dealing with as best they can tell determines whether it's community or school-based. So obviously, there are things that are school-based when they're in our schools, they've been healthy, and there's no other source for it than it does become, you know, considered a school-based. So we don't always know, but they try to determine, you know, where the case came from.
And you said that community cases are processed by us and school is processed by the Health Department?
Right. We have less resources than the Health Department does, and so there are less community cases that necessarily come into our school. And so that, right now, that's how they've been divided up. Whether that will stay depends on, that's part of our, you know, multiple meetings each week as we're looking at how are we doing and what are the numbers?
All right, so when we have a positive case, what happens next?
When there's a positive case, then, you know, if, if it's in a school, let's say it's an elementary school, then the classroom teacher is going to look at, you know, what is their seating chart? What is the distance between students when they're in their appropriate seats? You know, it might be different for, you know, 75% of the day versus what it is at small group. You know, the resource teachers, whether it's art or music, you know, they're going back for those classes two days prior, up to 48 hours prior, to determine who were close contacts. They look at the mode of transportation and look at seating charts and where kids were situated and what those distances were. And essentially, and they're getting information from the teachers as to whether the student has been properly wearing their, you know, their mask, and then deciding who is a close, who they believe is a close contact. And then those names go forward as potential exposures to be investigated by the contact tracers. And if there are students in that, within an elementary school, obviously, none of our students can be fully vaccinated, but there could have been an adult, whether it was an instructional assistant, that spent more than 15 minutes and 24 hours and within six feet, because remember, adults have a greater distance that they must maintain. If that adult is willing to share their, their vaccines, vaccination status, and they are fully vaccinated and they are not having any symptoms, then they would be allowed to stay and would not be quarantined. They would be, you know, we would call that being cleared from contact tracing. At the secondary level, that same thing happens with our students who could be vaccinated if they're willing to share their vaccination status. They can provide us the last date. We can be verified by our school nurses. And if they, if they are fully vaccinated and, which means two weeks after the second shot, and they have no symptoms, then they will also be allowed to stay at school. And one of the great improvements due to the, all the work of our school nurses and our administrators are, that they're really working, that when they have a case and have identified those close contacts, those potential exposures, that they're eliminating the, they're clearing the ones that are fully vaccinated and asymptomatic so that they can go back to class and they don't have to go home at all. And that's been a huge improvement.
That's huge, yeah. Okay, so after, so a non-vaccinated student is deemed to be a close contact, so their parent is called to come pick them up. What's next for that student after they go home?
Well, when the contact tracer calls them, they explain the fact of, of like using those mitigation strategies of wearing a mask, washing their hands, social distancing even in the house, you know, from other people in, in the home. And that they are told that if, if they are feeling better and asymptomatic by day five, they can go and get tested. The one condition that they can still have is the lack of taste or smell if they've lost that, that, you know, that can linger for longer. So that does not keep students who then test negative to be able to come back to school on day eight. And they tell them that if they choose not to get tested, and that choice may be because of, you know, the trauma of testing on, on kids, depending on the age, or the availability of tests, it's really hard. It's hard, it's difficult to walk into a pharmacy and get a kit right now, a take-home test kit. And so, you know, so they may decide that they aren't going to test, then they know that they're out for 10 days and that they would come back on day 11 if they are, if they are asymptomatic at that time.
And do they need to, can they count on the calendar and come back, or do they need to wait for a phone call?
They, they will get a letter, they will get an actual form from the Health Department that tells them, or from the School Health Services when they can return. What, it'll give them what day eight is if they were to choose to test on day five and it was negative and they had no symptoms, and also what the return day is at day 11 if they choose not to get tested. But again, to come back on day 11, they still need to be asymptomatic at that point. If they're still having symptoms other than lack of smell, they, they should not be coming back to school. And that's, they have those conversations with the parents and provide a letter.
So, Ms., so do they have to wait for the phone call from the, the second phone call from the contact?
Once that first phone call with contact tracing, they share all that information with them. And so there's, there isn't a second contact. The expectation is that families have heard the information, are following directions because it's provided in the letter, and they can go back to school with the letter and the schools will accept that letter.
Thank you. And then the last question there is if they decide to test on days five through seven and have a negative test, how do they log that to return on day eight?
Usually, a lot of times, they'll have something from the physician. Like I've had people share that, you know, what they get off their portal for their medical. They might have, you know, some, they may choose to take a picture of some result or whatever, but they're, whatever they, whatever they have that shows that they have been tested and are negative.
And they're going to bring that to school with them?
If, if they have it, if it's possible, yes.
Okay. So they don't need to do a separate logging step? They're just going to bring that to school when they return on day eight and say, I got tested, I'm negative?
Yes.
Okay. That's very, very helpful, Dr. Tiggen. And then, yeah, all right. My other question is, I know the web data has been down because of, because of the audit trying to reconcile our numbers with the Health Department's numbers. Do we have an anticipated, I know we'll update on Mondays here on out, but do we have an anticipated dated date initially?
Yes. The anticipated date is that Monday. The data will be up for the previous weeks, the, you know, the total, and then the new for last week will be added.
All right. Thank you. That is all from me.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Mrs. Cancelo.
Yes, okay. So I guess I'll start where Marcy left off about our online reporting. Could you just say one more time why we're switching? Because I've heard from quite a few constituents who would prefer the daily versus the weekly, but if you could just explain why our division is going to report weekly going forward?
Absolutely. You know, cases don't come through quickly either. I mean, as we're waiting on a case, I think people think that if I hear today on a Thursday there was a positive case at my school and I, you know, my child's been contact traced, that it'll be up either today or tomorrow. And the reality is until it goes through that contact tracing, we don't count, it doesn't go down because we don't know the total count of close contacts from those possible exposures. So, you know, that's one reason. And another is our principals have said that with as many phone calls as they're putting out, that quite honestly, that parents aren't continuing to listen to messages. And there's, there's other messages related to other things that are pertinent to school. And so they want to be able to provide that pertinent information as well as accurate testing, you know, COVID testing, or I shouldn't say testing COVID positive in contacts to their families. And so they're going to do that in their weekly update that they give, that they have for families anyway. And so that's a way that we're trying to be transparent as well as being accurate in what we're, we're sharing.
And if I might add to your response, Dr. Tiggen, and that's absolutely right. We, we want to maintain the transparency we've always had, but also increase our accuracy, right? And so I think this is one way we believe we can do that. But I just want to be clear that while that dashboard would be updated on a weekly basis and the broader aggregate community data, phone calls from principals would be on a weekly basis, if you were a close contact, you'll be notified in a timely manner through the contact tracing process. So anyone who would have potentially been a close contact would have been notified. That's not on hold for a certain day of the week or a certain timing. It's just simply our ability to report on progress can be much more accurate this way. And that's from a lot of experience doing this, and I think we were one of the first to get republic with the dashboard. We want to do it right. We want to do it well, and we want to maintain transparency for our families.
Thank you. I appreciate you sharing the why. Folks have had a lot of questions about that, especially when they see what perhaps some other regional folks are doing. Another question from teachers and staff, will they be notified when they have a positive case in their class?
Well, if it, I would, I would assume if it impacts them as a positive case, yes. But if, I don't, I don't know how they could not know who the close contacts were in their class without talking to the teacher.
They would be contact traced because of the proximity to the classroom. I think some have come to us where it's been a situation where we didn't learn of the positive case. It wasn't something that was discovered in school or reported to the school at some point. And so in that case, there may be a lag by the time someone is notified. But we absolutely, as soon as we learn of it, even if we learned that it was a positive case, the student hasn't been there, a visitor came to a building, but the visitor hasn't been there since, you know, August 29th, we're still going to disclose that as soon as we know it.
The, the way it came to me was from teachers and staff who aren't sure why their students are missing. And of course, because of trying to assist students, you know.
Sure.
Why are they out and trying to make connection?
And it may well not be that they're a positive case, but they're being contact traced and they're isolated so that that process can go on. So we can certainly make sure we're helping our, the staff members understand what the process looks like and the why, but that doesn't always, that's not always indicative of a positive case.
Right. They could be contact traced from something outside of school and still not be positive themselves.
Okay. Just, just bringing the questions forward that, that show up in my inbox or on the phone or where, however I get the information. And then my other questions and comments relate to, they relate to health and well-being of students and staff, but given our agendas, agenda items, they don't necessarily fit in the other presentations, so bear with me, Dr. Tiggen and Dr. Cashwell. Sustainability has been a word I've heard, and I know you guys have used it, we've all heard it and used it, with teachers and administrators being overwhelmed by instruction, COVID precautions, covering, teachers covering colleagues' classes, administrators covering classes, staying well past contract time to wait for buses, the various ways our teachers are going to try to meet students' needs as they're out on quarantine. Given the law and policy that we have for planning, is there, are there any strategies that we've come up with or are we considering any additional compensation?
So I think I can take that one. And first, I just want to acknowledge, absolutely, we hear that and we feel it, and I know that this is not a traditional school year. There were many challenges last year we faced and worked to overcome, and this year is no different. In fact, there are some new challenges we're experiencing. And so certainly, I hope we've proven, particularly through last school year, that when it came to finding creative ways through Wellness Wednesday or anywhere, we can do something differently and innovative to better serve our staff and our students, we're going to do that. We obviously have some different limitations this year, but that doesn't mean we won't continue to try to solve problems and meet needs. I particularly would say around staff covering for when a colleague needs to be out or that sort of thing. You know, we have looked into ways we might be able to add some compensation, but at the end of the day, I'd like to solve that problem completely. And so one of the things we're doing is adding more permanent substitutes. So we just met and looked at daily absence rates and tried to determine where are the unfilled jobs? How can we put some more support out there to, again, alleviate that kind of thing from happening? So I would just. So I would just say to our team, we acknowledge and we understand the tremendous challenges you're facing, whether it's our classroom teachers, particularly, I think of our 12-month staff, many of whom haven't even had a chance to breathe since March 13th, you know, now almost a year and a half ago. So this is, this is something we know, we hear. And whatever we can do to take stress off the plate and add some supports, we will. But there are, we acknowledge the challenges.
Okay. And then it's still around the same topic. As you just said, that consideration to removing things from plates, if possible, and knowing that how it's not sustainable, like, all that we're doing is not sustainable in terms of stress for our teachers and our administrators. And it's also, I believe, in direct conflict with our strategic commitment to recruit, retain, and reward the best and brightest for our students. Have we considered any, I know it's been in the media about another school division that shortened their school day? And I believe we're limited with that. But are there any other creative, considerate things we've been considering?
Yeah, I mean, we're certainly aware of, you know, even last school year where, you know, staff stipends have been added and those sorts of things. I hope a big step we made were the really remarkable compensation increases for all employees. We know that while we did offer a lot of stipends and we've got incentives in a number of shortage areas this year, looking at how we can increase base pay for the long term, right? So that impacts VRS earnings, those kinds of things. That's certainly something on our mind, making sure we're taking care of our employees in that way. But when it comes to shortening the instructional day and some other strategies we're seeing, I would just remind folks that, you know, school division structures are a little bit different everywhere. The number of instructional minutes they may have may have exceeded the state-required hours. And so they were able to shave some off and still meet those hours. You know, we're very mindful of making sure that we're meeting the state requirements. There aren't waivers for that in this circumstance. And so what we wouldn't want to do is make some decisions now that could impact us with makeup time or not meeting state requirements. But that doesn't mean we haven't considered every angle.
Okay. Thank you for providing clarification. That one seems to have gained momentum in the past 48 hours. So thank you for clarifying. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancelo. A couple of quick questions, Dr. Tigan. So thank you for Ms. Ogden asking that specific question pertaining to the number of contact traces. Because in the last meeting, you said that we had four positions that have been allocated. Two were in process, and I think we were looking for two more to be filled. Where are we with that?
They're at the interview stage. They have candidates, and so they're ready to interview for those two positions.
Thank you so much. So now, I was also advised that we're rolling out a process to allow school admins to do contact tracing for teachers to help get our teachers back in the building as quickly as possible. Where are we with that process?
That was implemented right after the last board meeting, where administrators have started, you know, if employees are willing to share their vaccination status and they're fully vaccinated and they're asymptomatic, then they aren't going out, they're staying in the classroom.
Thank you so much for that. I want to just quickly revisit a question I asked during the last meeting pertaining to the health and safety of our student athletes and outdoor game attendees. I've received some feedback from community, parents of athletes, coaches, teachers, calling us for us to mandate vaccine for our students. And, you know, with community transmission still being high, Delta variant still raging, and we need to do everything we can to keep our students and staff safe. Although playing outdoor sports is generally safer than indoors, many of our sports are high contact. And our athletes travel outside the community, and our game attendees are typically in close proximity. Crowded in bleachers, I've seen them in line for concession stands. We're seeing high school football games getting canceled everywhere due to COVID protocol. And so for many of our athletes, this disrupts their playing time, ability to train and practice. Not only impacts their performance, mental, physical well-being as well, but it also could impact their future plans. So with, you know, recruiting and scholarships. So is it possible? I would like for us to look at requiring our high school students, athletes, to be fully vaccinated or even require routine testing for those athletes who are unable to get vaccinated. And also, can we talk about developing game attendee health and safety guidelines? I've seen it with college and professional levels. I think they're doing, nuancing it such as proof of vaccination or even negative COVID-19 tests for entry. And even some requiring face coverings and other mitigation strategies that extend to the outdoor setting in order just to keep our community safe for transmission. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, as far as for the athletes, and, you know, I think that the screening and testing protocols we're looking at through the Vista program will help address that. And I think, as you said, you know, athletes travel. I think our athletes, following those mitigation protocols, whether they're home or away, is critical. You know, when we talk about the fans coming to games, you know, that's something certainly we'll take back. I'll take back and talk to John Carroll and have him talk to the DSAs and see if there's any recommendations they'd like to bring forward to the Health Committee.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you for also kind of speaking to our Vista program. And so it's my understanding that we are opting in?
We are. We, we're still working on our standard operating procedures and roles and responsibilities. But we are, we are moving full steam ahead. Our, like I say, our test kits are on their way, I hope.
And so, and I think you mentioned that we must have the consent from the parent or the guardian.
Yes, absolutely. We will not test anyone that does not have, you know, or even, you know, the test kits. If they don't give us permission, then they won't have them.
Thank you so much. Around mitigation plans, are we able to say confidently that every school across the county has shared with their school families and have posted on their website their COVID-19 mitigation plan?
I know that that was the directive. I will follow up with the school-level directors and verify that.
Okay, thank you for that. I want to thank Ms. Bowden and her staff for HR. I know that we are doing everything we can to recruit, retain, and reward staff. We know across the country and various industries, there's challenges. And I know that, but I want to say thank you. But this, this pertains to a HR-related question. I know there are teacher shortages everywhere that also impacts us here in Henrico. And I noticed on the county's iRecruitment page, there are a number of postings for critical instructional and instructional support positions needed to be filled in many of our Fairfield District schools. I noticed exceptional ed teachers, instructional assistants for exceptional ed and classroom teachers. On Slide four of the presentation shows that although transmission within the school is low, that staff capacity is rated as strained. My questions are, are we seeing any trends or shortage of critical instructional and instructional support positions concentrated in certain districts or certain schools?
You want me to? Okay. I'm fine.
And I really don't have the answer to that question for you right at this moment, but that is information that I can pull for you and provide to you.
Okay, that'd be awesome. And so when, when I get that, I'd love to talk about strategies that we're looking to use to fill those positions. In regards to that specific, is it, is it more in certain districts? Is it more in certain schools?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden, I appreciate that. And then the last one, well, I don't know if you can answer this, Dr. Tigan and Ms. Bowden, but are there any schools that are seeing a substantial number of teachers out for quarantine purposes?
Not, no, not really. And I think that's due to the level of vaccination we have. That helps, you know, they're able to be contact traced out most times.
Thank you, Doc. That's all I have. Thank you so much, Dr. Tigan. Madam Superintendent?
Chairman Cooper, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair, I just want to share that respectfully, I do believe that the social media impact on children is appropriate at this time. There's been other topics that's been discussed in this moment that were not directly on the agenda, but they were discussed. And so I just want to make clear that it is important that when we have opportunities to discuss health, I sit on the Health Committee, and we spend a significant amount of time discussing COVID. And COVID in a variety of ways, not only physical, but mental as well. And given all of what we've seen in this past three weeks around social media and the impact that it's having on our children, I really do feel it is appropriate to learn what my colleagues think about that. I do understand that we want to, you know, have Dr. Cashwell have an opportunity to digest the two questions that I presented. I'm not expecting an answer to those questions I presented, but I do want to be clear that I think it's important for the public to understand how I feel and how important I believe that what we're seeing with many of our kids, where there's anxiety, isolation, and many of the others, has been exasperated because of COVID. And as a member of the Health Committee, understanding all the phenomenal work that we do, sometimes there is not time to address other aspects. And our mental well-being and the connection and how it is aligned to COVID is important. So not expecting a response. But I will speak to Sandstone, Verona, and Highland Springs and share with you that I am hearing you about what you're seeing with your children and social media. I do believe that it is an important topic that deserves discussion. And I will do my best to try to make that happen. And I'll close with that.
Mrs. Atkins, I want to acknowledge the comments you've just made and those you previously made. I did take note of that and would share that this is a topic of great importance. And while I know that particularly since COVID, our Health Committee has sort of taken on the bulk of the effort around mitigation and our safe schools procedures, part of what our SHAB or our Student Health Advisory Board does is also look at some of those broader health impacts in the community. So absolutely, feedback that I hear, and I will work with Dr. Tigan and others related to how we might institute, whether it's in that very venue of the Health Committee or an arm of that, to begin to tackle some of the broader issues. And I also have made note, particularly for those who oversee our schools directly, our administrators and our technology program, we have done some work over the years to be common sense schools and really looking at what is, what are safe practices for social media use and acceptable use and such. And certainly take note that we will continue those efforts. And I look forward to discussing that more.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. I'll also mention that I'm also a member of SHAB as well. So the perspective and lens that I give in this moment is not just from the Health Committee, it's from SHAB as well that has not been able to meet because COVID takes precedence at this time.
Yeah, and I think it's time that we think about how we can continue that SHAB structure, given the many issues that are connected to health and wellness.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Madam Superintendent?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The next items I have are related to review of policy. So not seeking your approval at these times for policy changes. But as has been the case, our Policy Committee is hard at work making sure our policies are up to date and reflect practice. So a couple to put on your radar. If you have any questions, happy to take those and bring feedback back to the committee. For the first one, would bring to your attention the review of proposed revisions to Policy P4-09-004, which is salary checks and deductions.
Board members, are there any questions or comments on this policy? Madam Superintendent?
All right, hearing no questions. Next, some wording changes have been made to Policy P6-02-004, recording of attendance. And I'll be looking for your approval to make that change at a future meeting.
Are there any comments or questions on this policy?
Okay. Also recommending some revisions to Policy P10-10, dissemination of information to make sure that the policy is aligned with current practice.
Any questions or comments on this policy?
None? Okay. The next two are actually recommended for retirement to align with our current practices, and that's P6-20-004, fines. And P6-20-005, deposits for use of laboratory or library equipment supplies.
Any questions or comments? No, ma'am.
All right. Also bring to your touch, and I'll be seeking your approval on three policies that will remain unchanged, but want to bring them up to date for the approval process. That's P6-03-009, report of non-enrolled students. P7-03-003, high secondary. And P7-04-017, alcohol education.
Any questions or comments on these policies? Madam Superintendent?
All right, thank you. Next, I would like to have presenters come forward for our Gifted Education Advisory Committee Annual Update. As you know, each of the advisory committees reports annually once a year to our school board to update us or advise us on matters related to, in this case, gifted education, and to submit an annual report to the school board in regard to the implementation and review of our HCPS Local Gifted Education Plan. And I believe Mike Dussault is going to kick us off for that presentation, and we'll have the opportunity to hear from others, including members of our GAC.
Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Mike Dussault, and I'm the Director of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. With me this afternoon is Mrs. Jenna Conley, Gifted Specialist, and Dr. Binford Weaver, GAC Chair-Elect of the Henrico Gifted Education Advisory Committee. Together, we will present the board with an overview of the GAC 2021-22 Annual Report. On the slide before you, you will see the main focus of today's presentation. We'll start with an overview of the 2020-21 GAC year, share the names of our officers and members-elect, unpack the GAC plans for the 21-22 year, and wrap up the presentation with how our Divisional 2021-26 Gifted Local Plan for Gifted Education will serve as the anchor to meet the goals outlined in Destination 2025. As a reminder, the partnership between the GAC and the Division of Learning began with a direct plan to identify and address disproportionality of the gifted program demographics in Henrico. In order to accomplish this work, baseline metrics, feedback from staff, and a strategic plan of action were developed for our department. We are happy to report that this audit was actually completed one year earlier than the date identified in Destination 2025. In reviewing the results of the audit, a theme emerged, growing the pie. While at first glance, this can seem overly simplistic, it is in fact the intentional approach to allow for more students to develop their talents, gain access to services, and create pathways to advanced academic coursework in the district. As we began a new school year, our Gifted Local Plan rooted in the culture of potential. It's important to remember that the Code of Virginia outlines the definition of gifted as the following. Gifted students means those students in public elementary, middle, and secondary schools, beginning with kindergarten through 12th grade, who demonstrate high levels of accomplishment or show the potential for higher levels of accomplishment when compared to others of the same age, experience, or environment. We are looking forward to sharing updates with the board and our community throughout the implementation of our Gifted Local Plan. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, it is comprised of a group of dedicated parents, Henrico staff, community members, and students. Their main function is to examine, question, and advise gifted programs in Henrico to promote mutually beneficial relationships amongst our school boards, schools, parents, and community. The officers and members-elect you see on the screen represent only those who are new to their three-year term. Other magisterial districts are represented equally amongst the larger group, but are not shown on this slide. Altogether, 20 members representing all five magisterial districts participate in Henrico's Gifted Education Advisory Committee. Despite the multiple challenges created by the pandemic, the Gifted Education Advisory Committee satisfied quorum requirements to meet in person while allowing virtual participation as needed this past year. GAC meetings took place in October, December, April, May, and June. Officers and members-elect were presented to the board via an update in June of 2021 and are being recommended for the board's approval today. Here on this slide, you will see the remaining members of the advisory committee. The GAC currently has one vacant seat, which should be a parent or guardian wish to apply. Applications can be found on our district website. Applications can be found on our district website. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Binford Weaver, Chair-Elect of the Gifted Education Council. As you can well imagine, this group of officers-elect have already worked tirelessly this past summer to ensure the GAC is prepared to work hand-in-hand with our gifted department to ensure we reach our goals.
I'm hoping that you can hear me okay. All right. Many of the GAC members were new to our roles, as was Mrs. Conley, our Gifted Specialist. Many thanks to our former Chair, Mr. Pierre Green, who helped us bridge the gap as our group developed a better understanding of the roles, of our roles and responsibilities. Mrs. Conley navigated our current programming and services for gifted students, which helped the committee understand the groundwork that was being developed for moving the work forward. Let's take a look at what we focused on during the 2021 school year. The GAC began the year with Mrs. Conley giving us an overview of current programming and services. Most of our meetings included follow-up discussions where we provided feedback to expand opportunities to understand the work at hand. Several GAC officers and members were part of the equity audit interviews and gave input on the current state of gifted programming in Henrico. Members also had the opportunity to review the local plan for the education of the gifted and contribute to drafting the goals and objectives for the new draft of the local plan. Plan copies were provided to all members in the spring of 2021 to allow for feedback on the plan in place as gifted program staff worked to rewrite the plan. GAC planning for the 21-22 school year took place this summer. Meetings for the upcoming year are scheduled around the county at various HCPS sites to allow for members and the community to participate in person if they choose. Meeting notices have been posted on the gifted website along with Microsoft Teams links and sites for all of these public meetings. Members of the GAC were also present at Henrico's Back-to-School kickoff event in August and had the opportunity to partner with Mrs. Conley in connecting with our parents and guardians in the community to share more about gifted programming. As we head into a new school year, the GAC has a number of recommendations we would like the board to consider to keep our important work moving forward. To better support the implementation of the district's new Gifted Local Plan and meet the needs of our students, we are asking the board for the following: A full-time GISA or Gifted Young Scholars Academy Administrator to support and further develop the program; two additional gifted resource teachers to move the district closer to a 2-to-1 ratio for school support; 12 additional Maggie Walker Governor's School seats, one for each current middle school. To conclude our presentation, Mrs. Conley will now outline the opportunities where the GAC will partner with the gifted department to lift the work of the local plan for this upcoming year. Thank you.
As the GAC moves forward into the 2021-22 school year, we plan to build our Gifted Education Advisory Committee meetings and discussion around strong communication and partnerships. Many structures that were researched, evaluated, and developed over the past school year have now moved into the implementation phase for 21-22. Gifted Education Advisory Committee meeting topics for the coming school year include, but are not limited to, those you see on the slide. These topics were identified through feedback and discussions with our officers-elect this summer. After months of gathering feedback, brainstorming, and strategic planning, the path forward for supporting gifted services and programming is now in place. On Friday, September 10, the gifted department proudly presented the 2021-2026 Local Plan for the Education of the Gifted to the board via a weekly update. Mr. Dussault will now review some of the highlights contained within the new plan.
On this slide, while not an exhaustive list, we have captured some of the larger components of the Gifted Local Plan that will begin this year. Number one, revisions were made to the gifted identification process to ensure equity, consistency, and best practice across Henrico County schools with regards to student observations and interviews. Two, the addition of gifted identification and screening tools designed to recognize strengths in students from various backgrounds, including economically disadvantaged, culturally diverse, identified with a disability, and multilingual students. Three, the targeted development of a K1 instructional platform of research-based talent development response lessons to extend critical thinking, academic growth, with a focus on our underserved students. Four, implementation of a variety of professional learning opportunities built for gifted resource teachers, gifted cluster teaching, general education teachers in gifted pedagogy, characteristics of gifted learners, and gifted instructional models to meet the needs of all learners identified with potential. Five, and most importantly, a structured communication and engagement plan with parents and community members that strengthens the identification, enrichment, and academic support for our gifted and at-potential students. It's important to note that while the local plan provides the roadmap for gifted services and programming for a county, it's our strategic plan where the systematic changes take place. Through the work of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation Department, gifted programs, and our GAC, we have engaged in the evaluation of the identification process and are applying those recommendations to open doors for learners who show potential for advanced academic success. At this time, Ms. Conley, Dr. Weaver, and I will now take any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dussault. I'm going to start with Mrs. Augbrun, then go to Ms. Cancela.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for all your work on this. It is, it obviously shows y'all are working for, basically, as we've talked about before, the goal is to create as many opportunities for kids to have rigorous learning as is possible. And we're trying to take down any barriers that exist, finding them where we can, so that more kids can participate in these programs that we offer. But I'd like to go, if you don't mind, Mr. Dussault, to the Ask, the Ask page where you said, the things that, keep going, the three things we need. Right there. Okay, so let's talk about this for just a minute. So GISA Administrator, we do not have one now. Who is overseeing GISA today?
So we have a combination. We have a part-time coordinator who really focuses on the instructional portion of the day and the professional learning throughout. We also have a GISA, we have a Wilder Administrator who, as part of her administrative duties, helps support GISA throughout the day.
And how many students do we have in GISA today that those folks are overseeing with all the other jobs that they have?
We have approximately 300, probably a little bit less, maybe like 285.
Right, so what you're suggesting for the betterment of the program is a person dedicated to overseeing GISA specifically. That is their job, they're working with parents and the students for the, okay, so just want to get that out there. And two additional gifted resource teachers, I assume they would go into the pool that go into our schools now, and we've been asking for two for a long time. All right, but let's talk about the 12 additional Maggie Walker Governor's School seats. As y'all know, I sit on the Maggie Walker Regional Board and is our board's rep to that board. We've been talking about this, we have been talking about admissions changes at Maggie Walker, we're looking at our admissions policy here in Henrico and looking at how we can make that more equitable. So where do you see the 12, now the answer, but I'm just, we need to get it out there, the 12 additional seats, how would we allocate those seats? Because that's the burning question now that this slide is out there.
So let me give you a very specific vague answer. As we await the Maggie Walker Board to conclude their work and recommendations with regards to assessment, rubrics, and all those other things that I know they're discussing, we are envisioning right now that the 12 slots go to each individual middle school right now. And when we get a final determination from the board, we'll reevaluate it at that time.
And so just to update this board and the community, and it is public, it's been, we had our Maggie Walker meeting yesterday. The Regional Board at Maggie Walker is looking at changing the admissions policy there. Just, it's pretty simple, it's changing the weighting of the rubric of the evaluation. They're talking about eliminating one specific assessment test that we got more information on, that's about 10 points of the rubric, and moving those 10 points to be part of the writing sample that the students have to use. So it's a reshuffling of the points in the rubric, but also they see that as a barrier being removed for kids who are struggling with that. But we also adding some weight to the writing sample, lets each school system, but lets Maggie Walker evaluate the kids in real time. What are their strengths with writing, which is so important at Maggie Walker. But it's important to note that just because Maggie Walker might change their admissions standards, not standards, but the admissions rubric and the admissions process, Henrico and each of the 14 districts make up their own admissions process. So we are in the process of examining ours, which I think is going to be a topic of another day. But the suggestion of 12 additional seats, this is something I've brought up before, that we would like to have more slots available for more students. This would not replace what we're doing now, but this would include two, basically be two seats reserved at each middle school across the county, but this would be 12 additional seats. And so we would have, right now, we have 180 students at Maggie Walker. We're talking about, at this point, we would have 192 slots, and we have confirmed that there is room, we can do that. And so we're excited, I am excited about this possibility of having more students across the county having a slot. And we're looking at now how we're going to do that, how we're going to implement it, but I think you're right, one step at a time. And we've got to get straight what Maggie Walker's doing, and we'll approve or not or decide those admissions changes at our next Regional Board meeting. The other thing I wanted to ask you about is, wait, I got it, wait one second, is how are we going to, when are we going to be talking about the Maggie Walker process in Henrico? Do you have a timeframe at this point? I know you're looking at it, but do you have a timeframe?
So yeah, as you mentioned earlier, as soon as we get that final word that everything is a done deal, we've got everything on the back end ready to go in terms of communications to our parents, from the application itself and some of the changes that I know we have outlined earlier this week for the board, so that you have a little bit of an update of some of the barriers that we were going to remove to hopefully increase the applicant pool. So we are ready to go on our, and once we get some finalization from Maggie Walker.
Okay, so we don't have a date yet, we're just, it's a one-step-at-a-time process. But thank you for all your work on this, and I would echo our appreciation to Pierre Green. He's been on the GAC for quite a while now and a chair for several years, and so, but we do appreciate all of the parents who agree to, and the teachers and staff members who agree to be on GAC. We meet several times, you know, I think it's five meetings a year that we have, and our administrators do this, and our teachers that participate in GAC, obviously, it's above and beyond what they already do, which is a busy schedule. So, but thank you for all of this, and I appreciate the work.
Thank you so much, Ms. Augbrun. Ms. Cancela?
Yes, I appreciate this update as well, eliminating barriers and access and opportunity are something we've really been focusing on across the board in Henrico County Public Schools. My question's, the 285 students at the GISA and the position, the full-time coordinator, how is this commensurate with the complement perhaps at our other specialty centers, like a program within a building?
Yeah, so that information I do not have at this time, I would have to get that for you.
Okay, I'd be interested in knowing if 285 is commensurate with what other folks are managing when they ask for additional complement. And then the 2-to-1 ratio with our two additional gifted resource teachers, will this eliminate shared staff? I know I have some elementary schools that actually share gifted staff.
I don't think adding just two is going to eliminate that in any way, but what it does do, it does start to free up some that might be potentially sharing three, and it also avails us to the ability, if we have increased numbers, of which we are hoping for, that we're able to staff that accordingly.
Okay, whereas, whereas some schools have, I mean, just so we're clear for those who may listen back, that some schools actually have a dedicated teacher to a dedicated gifted class throughout our schools, whereas some of our schools share a gifted teacher, right? Two and three schools, is that my understanding as to what you just said?
I think you may be thinking our gifted resource teachers will have typically two to three schools. And then we do have some students participating in our zone center and school-based programs where they are with, they are in a class together all day.
Okay, thank you for just, you know, providing additional detail to, that was what I was trying to get to. But the next thing is the seats at Maggie Walker. 12 additional Maggie Walker Governor's School seats, so is that one per middle school? And then I'm going to circle back and go, how are the seats going to be handled? Since three of our middle schools have IB programs in them, are the IB applicants going to be associated with their original zone middle school? Or how is that going to work? Because I don't want zone students to be at a disadvantage because of the IB applicants in their schools.
Mrs. Cancela, I'm going to take that one, and just note that in this presentation, GAC is making a staffing recommendation which administration will consider. So Mr. Dussault certainly hears the recommendation, we as a board hear the recommendation, and this is actually something, as Mrs. Augbrun mentioned, staff have talked about when we think about increasing opportunity, particularly as it relates to rigorous programs. So certainly no specifics about how those slots would be allocated have been discussed fully for implementation at this point, I'd want to make the public aware of that, but simply do recognize, understand, and honor that GAC has brought that forward as an ask for the administration and the board's consideration as we move into future budget cycles. And then should we be able to make that sort of a fiscal allocation, we would consider the plan. But to your point, absolutely, the 12 they've suggested here are meant to make sure that each middle school would receive one.
I just, this is not the first time I brought it forward. I want to say I addressed this specific situation with Moody in particular, the last time we discussed it, which may have been April, May, June timeframe, so I'm just circling back since I'm seeing this in front of us again.
Absolutely, and I think that these do go hand-in-hand. I know you've made prior recommendations related to taking a look, and I think many of it was during redistricting, and this has come up since then, so I understand this topic has surfaced a number of times where the team has been asked to look specifically at our current middle school IB programs, equity and access there, and the feeder patterns to make sure that we're striking a balance. And so the team has been working on that, and certainly anything related to the Maggie Walker seats would be part of that conversation, should we move forward with adding those.
And then lastly, just, it was, was any kind of look back, I see, I know we're going to highlight the K1 identification and education process so that we can provide additional access and opportunity to more of our students of potential. Is there any look back being considered, perhaps students that may have been missed? Or are we just talking about a point in time and going forward, such that we probably Or are we just talking about a point in time and going forward, such that we probably have a lot of kids that, a lot of students that we may have missed? Just something for consideration, or has the committee considered it?
So that's a great question. And while the K1 talent development lessons not only build teacher capacity and give our kids an opportunity to participate in some of those lessons, so to speak, the rating scales and our criteria, the way we have organized everything for identification this year should be able to go back and hopefully catch some of those students. And again, with the professional learning that Mrs. Conley and the gifted resource teachers have developed this year is intentional in terms of what you should be or could be looking for, for a student with potential.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancela. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. So one of my questions actually overlapped with Ms. Cancela, which was, you know, how does, how does having a separate administrator from GISA compare, for example, like the IB program at Moody? Do you know if they have a separate administrator?
Currently, our, if you're looking at our middle schools, they have part-time coordinators where they teach a portion of the day, and then they have coordinator duties the other half of the day.
Okay, so I think similar to what Ms. Cancela was asking on how we're adding an administrator for GISA, kind of compare on how we do admin complement in other middle schools' programs is something to look at. I got to talk with Ms. Conley and Mr. De Sault earlier this week about some of these points, so I'm not going to rehash them just for the sake of talking, but I'll say I'm excited about the, some of the different screeners and identifiers for our students. When we looked at the equity index on the report last spring, it was our ESL students and our economically disadvantaged students that had the biggest disproportionality. And so I'm seeing some very specific steps y'all are taking to try to ameliorate that. And so I appreciate that. And then the other question I had, just looking at our new members coming in GAC, because I know we'll be voting on that tonight, are they zoned by where they live or what school they go to, or either?
It's where they live unless they're like an admin rep, like we, you know, we typically have it be based on your home address, yes, for members.
Because two of my beloved constituents, I think, are listed for three, the three-chap district on the slide. So anyway, so I just wanted to clarify, and we can talk some after this if you want, in between this and the meeting, if that's helpful.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, that's it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Mrs. Atkins?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm also grateful for all of the effort for folks who are volunteering their time to help us move our education system forward. You know, our motto is "The right to achieve with the support to succeed." That means a lot to me. It means a lot to our families, and I believe that all children from all economic and cultural backgrounds have the right to succeed. I also believe that every child can reach their potential when they've been exposed, when families know at the elementary level and are able to choose pathways that can help their children develop their potential. I think that, you know, as we look at ways to make more equitable environments and opportunities, I'm grateful to see that we are expanding seats. I'm looking forward to learning more about how we bring exposure and awareness to areas that may not have been or received the same level of resources in the past. And so as you move forward in your work and as the committee moves forward in their work, prayerfully, it will be with an equity lens. It will take a look at history of gifted and what that word meant in the past and what it means right now and how we want to evolve and what that means for the future. The expansion of those seats are going to be expanded in areas that have the program. So in thinking about the areas that do not have it, what does that look like? What does that mean? And how do we get there? So again, grateful for your work, looking forward to seeing things evolve as we believe that all children have potential. And it's a matter of exposing them and giving them the support that they need so that they can see it in themselves and that their family can choose the correct pathways for their future. So thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Ms. Atkins. Again, I just want to echo the sentiments of my peers in regards to the questions that were asked, as well as the statements that were made. Thank you again, Ms. Conley, Mr. De Sault, and Dr. Benford Weaver for you taking on this Herculean task of assisting us from a volunteer perspective, you as well as your fellow GAC members. Please send our sentiment to them. And Ms. Augbrun, thank you for championing our desire to increase access and equity in regards to our gifted. So thank you so much. Madam Superintendent?
And I'll say thank you once more. I know you've heard lots of gratitude from the Board, and I share the same to our staff and to our gifted advisory for your tremendous efforts to continue to engage in this work, even through unusual circumstances, for meeting and so on. We're just grateful for your service, certainly hear your recommendations, and we'll take those under advisement as we work towards developing future budgets and programs. Thank you so very much. All right, for the next item, we have an update on our ongoing work with high school redesign, and Dr. Farrell is coming to the podium here. And this particular high school redesign update is focusing on the aspect of specialty center criteria for admissions and some work that's been done, as Dr. Farrell has promised during previous presentations, that that was one of the many elements that has been under consideration as we're looking at this larger scope of high school redesign. So Dr. Farrell, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Thomas Farrell, Director of High School Education, and I'm here today to update you on the journey of high school redesign and HCPS. Today's focus is around the work in progress to increase the diversity of enrollment in our advanced course programming and expand the advanced pathways available to students that allow them to connect their interests and passions. Today's update is specific to the centers which reside in our comprehensive high schools. So what have we been up to since our last update in June? First, we started with center directors analyzing the current experience and reviewing the Ford NGL data and OCR research. From there, we worked with our Division of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation there to facilitate focus groups around the application process comprised of students, families, teachers, center directors, and counselors. We were intentional to include perspectives of stakeholders that have engaged with centers and some that have not. We utilized all of this information to connect with center directors and work on small incremental changes to make a big impact. The focus groups provided our most helpful information, highlighting several themes which were instrumental in identifying the minor changes needed. Targeted recruitment was one of those critical findings to increase awareness and representation at individual centers. The focus group's themes prompted center directors to develop informational cards accessible anytime, anywhere for families to help raise awareness and easily connect with their academic and career planning in schools. An example of the informational card for Freeman's Center for Leadership, Government, and Global Economics is on the screen. Each card includes the school's name, center director, an overview of the center, courses associated with the center, industry and occupational alignment, work-based learning experiences, clubs, and some colleges and universities that students who previously graduated through centers have attended. In addition, center directors are making intentional efforts to connect with the middle schools with less student involvement. Another key theme from the focus group highlighted a need for supports at elementary and middle school levels to help more students meet prerequisites for centers. This theme reinforced a priority to remove barriers for students that may not have started with the same resources and supports as their peers. For this year, we made minor tweaks to align our admissions process to empower opportunities for students. Some of the minor tweaks that are general, but not specific to every center include flexibility with recommendations. For example, we will incorporate recommendations from elective teachers to allow students to demonstrate their brilliance beyond core courses. Also, we will be including elective classes in the GPA calculation, which also, while also reducing the emphasis on GPA and test scores. Options for students to include a video testimonial in addition to application requirements or a video response to an essay prompt. This approach allows for center selection committees to get to know students beyond their academic history. And in some cases, being conscious of inequities that our system enables, for example, given additional consideration to middle schoolers who take high school courses when not all of our middle schools offer the same amount of high school credit courses. The work does not stop here. We will continue to reflect and monitor the impact of small changes. This all culminates through the connection with academic and career planning so that all students are learning of these opportunities and making decisions along their journey to explore the pathways that best meet their needs. School counseling, CTE, health and physical education, and technology have collaborated to bring Major Clarity's online academic and career planning platform to all HCPS students in grades four through 12, beginning in quarter one of this school year. While career assessments, career cluster exploration, and academic and career plan portfolio building begins in elementary school, HCPS centers have been specifically mapped into the Major Clarity platform as pathways so that they're embedded into the foundation of formal academic and career planning for every student, beginning in seventh grade. You will hear more about the full academic and career planning process, including implementation of Major Clarity from Liz Parker, Director of School Counseling, and others in a December presentation to the Board. Thank you for continuing on our journey. We look forward to the exciting adventures to come with high school redesign. At this time, I will take any questions the Board may have.
Well, again, Dr. Farrell, thank you for your innovative and creative presentation. A big question mark in the sky looks real good, I want to say. Thank you for that, and that looks great. I'm going to start with Mrs. Atkins.
So Dr. Farrell, I'm so excited about the high school redesign plan and look forward to seeing more information come out in the future. For the informational cards, are they digital and in print?
Right now, they're in, in digital format, but we will, we do plan to print some just to have at some of the schools, because we know that, you know, some students and families still like to, you know, touch paper and, you know, read things that way.
I also think for some families, having the print, you know, if it makes it home, being able to hand their parents something that they can have and ponder on over time to help make family decisions is wise. So thank you for your response. I'm also pleased to know that, that you and your team are conscious that not all middle schools have the same exposure and resources and opportunities as others. And taking that into consideration is important when you're trying to develop pathways for your child, you know, as a parent. And so I think outstanding work in recognizing that and building that into the future for our families. So kudos to you for acknowledging that, and I look forward to more to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Augbrun?
Not really a question, just a comment. First of all, thank you for the, the hard work to you and the team. But I think periodically looking at our specialty centers, being sure that we have the rigor, being sure that we're meeting the needs of kids is so important. It is ongoing work. This is not something that, you know, you just do once and then it's done. So I appreciate the, the effort to continually improve the program that we're offering our students. But, but I also appreciate the intentionality of removing barriers. I think the same thing applies, that I said, to our gifted advisory report. We're removing those barriers and making sure we have opportunities for all kids and that we're meeting the demand, because we turn kids away from our centers every year. And we want to be sure that, that all kids are having that opportunity that want them. We have lots of choices, and I really look forward to the onboarding of our new centers next year, that, I know that's coming later, we're not going to talk about those today, but I just look at, I look forward to learning more about those as they come on. But thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Augbrun. Ms. Shea?
Thank you. Yeah, I kind of got a flight attendant vibe there at the end, which was delightful, because I haven't traveled for years at this point, thanks to COVID. So thank you for taking us on that journey.
Welcome.
All right, just two things. I love these informational cards. Additionally, just to give a shout out to Mac and his team, they put together this incredible flip book for our CTE offerings as well. And so what I would really love to see are these meshed together so that students who have an interest in something specifically, they can see both the specialty center offerings we have, as well as the CTE offerings that, that mesh. Because I think for a lot of students, we have a lot more opportunities out there than they realize, and they may say, oh, I've heard about this, I want to stick with this one. Really, there might be something else that better fits their needs. However, as you were talking, it sounds like Major Clarity may satisfy that need.
I was going to say that, yep. Through Major Clarity, students will be able to see all the opportunities that we have throughout the county, not just specific to centers, but if they have an interest in, I don't know, say medicine, you know, maybe you don't have to enroll in Godwin Center or the new center in Hermitage, but there, there may be other ways that you can cluster classes together to still get that experience.
Yeah, I think that's, and I think that's really kind of one of our missing links to bring everything together. And so I guess my follow-up question with that is how accessible to parents is Major Clarity, or is it only accessible for students through their account?
Not 100% sure, but I would say that, I would imagine that it would be accessible to parents, because we, we want to encourage parents to have those conversations with those students. Now, in terms of, you know, maybe parents having access to the platform, I'm not totally sure about that, but I would imagine that this is a process that we would want to include parents in.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, because I think that's a really important step and a really important link, because just as students kind of get focused on, on the direction they want to go, sometimes parents get focused on the direction they want their student to go. And so for all of our stakeholders, just to realize the breadth of opportunity we have for our students in, you know, all different facets, I think that's where all the pieces kind of gel together. So I appreciate that. And then I just, I, I am appreciative that we have some other alternatives to the essay for the application process. I know for some of our centers, that writing ability is absolutely critical to be able to be successful in those. But, you know, in the last year, I've really gotten a lot of feedback from parents who have engaged in this process and been enlightened on really the number of tutors and outside help that is hired to help a lot of students with their application process to these centers. And that's obviously not accessible for all of our students. And so by giving other ways for students to communicate themselves, to hopefully level that playing field back a little bit, I think is really important. Piggybacking on that, well, Ms. Augbrun, when you mentioned that Maggie Walker is now putting more weight on the essay, I think that's something for us to keep in mind and for you to share with Maggie Walker on how do we make sure, because like, like you said, writing ability is absolutely critical to being successful at Maggie Walker, but how do we ensure that in the application process, we're really reflecting the student's abilities and leveling the playing field between who may be able to hire external help to have with that application and, and students who are not?
Well, and, and if you don't mind, I will answer that question real quick. It's an in-person. They have to write that essay onsite, in person.
Well, that's problem solved there.
Right, so that, that was the, the solution to that, because, you know, you don't want to have that as a possibility, that someone else has access to help that another child doesn't. So yeah, it's an in-person. Yep.
So, I appreciate on Henrico's side how we're looking at, you know, other solutions to that. And that's all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Mrs. Cancela?
Yes. Yes, I appreciate all my colleagues' comments. We're all in agreement, I think, about removing as many barriers as we can. As to your point, Ms. Sheamus, Ms. Ogborne, about the writing being so important, that's also why I'm so glad it's being highlighted with us being back in person or at HVA through our literacy plan. We know that we have some work to do in terms of helping our students write. And with these applications, as great as it is, we've already noted that our students have some work to do. So, while I appreciate the emphasis on writing, I'm thrilled that we're actually putting the emphasis on writing so our students will know how to write for these applications to the centers. So, can you talk to me about the GPA calculation and the elective classes? You say it's reducing the emphasis on GPA and test scores, right?
Right. So, previously, some of our centers didn't include elective classes in the GPA calculation. It might have been just, you know, core courses and a world language.
Right.
So, through our conversations as a group, we felt like, you know, students can demonstrate their brilliance in other areas that may not manifest themselves in a history class. So, why not allow, you know, their art or music to be included in that GPA calculation?
And do you think this, and I know from meetings with, hearing feedback from students, do you think this will also increase participation in classes that students want to take that they don't take in terms of electives?
That's the goal. That's the goal, to allow students to have a little more freedom. So, you're probably thinking about that student that adds that seventh AP class versus taking ban. We are trying to minimize that.
Well, good.
And allow for more freedom.
Good, because I know that's, I mean, that's direct feedback from our students that I love seeing incorporated in this design. I'm also enjoying the updates in smaller chunks, and I can't wait till we get to the point that brings it all together where we show how proactive our planning really is, where it's going to impact everything from capacity to relevance and the relevance of each of our programming, that it is the best for our students and how to move them forward, and that we're going to have the capacity in our buildings to do so, and that we're going to meet the needs of more students than ever in our programs, whether they be tech or specialty center. And that's all I have. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancela. So, Dr. Farrell, so parents do have a login for Major Clarity, I checked briefly, and so they can access it. So, thank you for the update. I look forward to the presentation in December on the Major Clarity platform. I guess one thing I'm hopeful for is that there'll be an opportunity to maybe train or educate our families about the platform, even possibly through our Bridge Builder Academy, just again, giving them the opportunity to train and educate on that. So, it's awesome that the cards, as stated by my peers, are phenomenal, very informational, just the intentional effort to give access to as many families as possible and to help to navigate the various roads. I'm on this journey toward enrollment, enlistment, or employment. It's phenomenal, and I think, I'm just like, I'm just excited to see what the end result's going to be, which Ms. Ogborne stated, it's not just a one-time evaluation, but it's a constant evaluation and evolution to get to what our expected result is. So, thank you again, Dr. Farrell. Madam Superintendent?
Apologize, my mic wasn't on. Thank you very much for this presentation, and we appreciate the board's feedback again as we continue this journey. And I'll also say, well played with the Journey song intro. Appreciate that and the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. For our final item, last but not least, we have an update related to pupil transportation. No doubt, this is a topic on everyone's mind in our community. We certainly understand that this is, issues around transportation are not unique to Henrico. We are facing a national bus driver shortage, and you don't have to look far on either the local news or the national news to see that this is something affecting every community. And I am really proud of the tremendous efforts of Mr. Pritchard and the, Mr. Ellis and the entire transportation team for how they are working tirelessly to find solutions to address this. So, while I know that we've not been able to solve all the problems, I don't want anyone to be under the impression that there's not an incredible team behind the scenes doing everything humanly possible to think about a way forward in service of our students in our community. And I think for those of you that follow some things on social media, you'll even see that the pigeon has been allowed to drive the bus. If you follow children's literature, you might know there's a book, Don't Let Pigeon Drive the Bus. We've seen the National Guard in some states coming in to assist, but it's fair to say no stone has been left unturned. And so, Mr. Pritchard, would you please kick us off on your update and let us know where we stand in regards to some transportation challenges and certainly where we're headed with progress?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I'm here today to bring you a transportation update. And like Dr. Cashwell, before I begin, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the entire transportation team for all of their hard work and efforts for safely transporting our students to and from school each day. This is another Transportation Operations Department that has stepped up to meet the needs of our school community for the past 18 months. They have contributed to every need and request since the pandemic began in 2020. And just some highlights from this team, we're talking about meal deliveries, providing transportation for those who were unable to pick up electronic devices for virtual learning. They brought back our special needs students, CTE students, and most of our vulnerable students for face-to-face instruction last fall, and a return to school and extracurricular activities in March, and increased summer school routing that included high school students for the very first time. This team in operations has been willing and eager to help serve our students and our schools from the beginning, and we could not and cannot do the work without their much appreciated support. Lastly, I would like to thank our school staff, our students, and their families for all of their patience and understanding as we work through the impacts of the national bus driver shortage. Sorry about that. The first day of school brought our traditional transportation delays, but by the end of the week, the team was able to get ready or greatly improved the pickup and drop-off times in many areas. Even with these improvements, we do have routes with scheduled pickup times after the school day has already begun at some of our elementary, middle, and high schools due to our bus driver shortage. During the first week of school, the transportation team recorded over 500 double runs. The team has worked to reduce these to 236 double runs and 15 triple runs. Most of these additional runs are into three-chopping Tuckahoe zones due to higher ridership numbers and higher driver vacancies. Currently, we have 100 vacant bus driver positions. However, we do have some bright news on this front. We have seven drivers finishing class, and they will start once they're able to get tested and get ride-along time. Two have completed the requirements and will be added as drivers. We also have added five bus assistants and one car van driver to begin as well. 14 drivers started class last Wednesday, and depending on CDL need and required endorsements, this could be a three- to six-week process before we see those drivers. So far, we have three student drivers to begin our newly-added September 29th class. And since last Tuesday, we have interviewed 16 potential candidates from last week's job fair and the normal application process. We also have 10 student drivers that are scheduled for our October 13th class. We are planning on holding another Drive the Bus job fair on October 16th, and I'm just making, it's a shameless plug, at Hermitage High School, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This, by far, has been our most successful recruiting event, and we are looking forward to seeing what this could bring us as, in potential drivers. As we bring on additional staff, it will decrease double runs and improve our pickup and drop-off times. Also notice on the slide, the phone number's up there. Please call anybody looking for a job. I mean, we're trying to hit all angles here. While we work to improve the driver shortage problem, we are reviewing and working on solutions to help improve pickup and drop-off times by reviewing our routes and ridership numbers. By doing so, we can begin consolidating buses that are not being fully utilized and add a bus back into the fold to help with routes and double runs. We're looking at consistent ridership numbers that will also allow us to eliminate zero bus pickup and drop-off stops. These are stops that have, that we have in our routes that yield no students, but we are making stops and losing time. We're trying to find non-CDL drivers and add minivans into our exceptional routes so we can use the larger buses in our daily routing to eliminate double runs. We're also looking at, we're also looking if adjusting the bell schedule times would help. The transportation team is in the process of looking at our routes and trying to determine what the adjustment would look like and if it could help. This past July, we began acquiring a bus app, a bus tracking app that would allow parents the ability to track their child's bus in real time. Like most items during COVID, we experienced delays in getting the GPS hardware required to utilize the app. We have begun receiving the hardware, and we are still installing them as we can on our buses. Even if the app were fully available, this would make our current struggles even more challenging due to the thousands of changes that we are still working on through, or working through with our schools. While we work through not having an app, we will continue with schools to improve communication about bus pickup and drop-off times. Transportation will continue to use School Messenger in the mornings to help families get students to the bus stop to avoid long waits, and we will rely on schools to use School Messenger to notify parents in the afternoon when there are unique and unexpected circumstances that cause longer-than-usual and releasing buses. We do understand that this communication can help reduce some of the stresses on families wondering when their student or students will arrive at the bus stop. All of us at Transportation want to again say thank you to our students and our families and our schools for their patience as we work through, by far, our most challenging time. Your understanding and support is greatly appreciated, and at this time, I will attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard. Ms. Atkins?
So, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Pritchard and your transportation team.
They've been awesome.
They are beyond awesome. They are exhausted, tired, but they love our kids.
Yes, they do.
And they're doing double runs and triple runs, and so many are so grateful for them doing everything that they can think of to get our kids to and from home. Can you share with me how many bus drivers have been hired so far? I know you gave it to us in pieces, but do you have just a solid number on how many we've hired so far?
I mean, when I say hired, this is somebody that we would actually put on the road because, I mean, we put people through the process that pass the HR screening and so forth, that they're able to pass a physical. We try to do that before we get into the process. But I would say, as far as actually hiring per se, that put them on the road, I would have to get you that number.
Some quick math that might help based on, so we recruit individuals in who are interested, and they start the process. They can't actually be hired until they pass all those tests, as Mr. Pritchard ventured, the health screening as well as the, get the required CDL. But it's about 50 in the hopper, if you will. And so, he mentioned, like, you know, a piecemeal as students graduate, it might be, you know, two or three here or there. So, they've been steadily coming onboard as soon as we're able to get them through the training process and through the screening process.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I'm interested in learning more as far as feedback from our bus drivers on management of the seating charts and additional paperwork. Can you share with me what type of feedback you're hearing from our bus drivers?
Well, I know that in some cases, because we do have bus drivers that still make their normal routes, they're making their normal amount of runs, and keeping a seating chart has been relatively easy. The difficulty and where I think that we take great pride in is the teamwork that we've had and sitting down and developing solutions to help out with those bus seating charts with schools and administrators and our DLT team to take pictures, to at least provide some kind of seating chart that way. I mean, we're sending bus drivers back out to run routes that don't even know the routes, they don't know the kids per se. I mean, they're just doubling back to help out when they can.
And I think what I'll, you know, one thing that Mr. Pritchard has provided the leadership team on a regular basis with feedback, and the seating charts were challenged, we heard directly from drivers, that, you know, because drivers were often, as he said, not driving kids they typically drive, or the ridership was varying greatly between morning and afternoon or even day-to-day, they worked very quickly to work with our school administrators to come up with a process that someone could board the bus as it comes in and take a photograph to know exactly who was sitting where and not add extra time or stress to our drivers. So, that's a great point and something, they've really been creative in responding to those challenges as they come up.
Thank you both for sharing that because I think we also want to make sure that our bus drivers' voices are being heard, and they may potentially also have ideas and solutions, and certainly want to make sure that, you know, have an opportunity to learn what they are, if not directly from the bus drivers, but of course, from yourself and the leadership team. So, thank you for that. I also want to share just some ideas that I've received from families. The first one, and these are, some of these are very specific to Verona Sandston and Highland Springs, and others are not. Around traffic patterns, I want to encourage us to take a look at the intersection of Williamsburg Road where Montrose Elementary School sits. I see it as a hot zone, not specifically due to bus driver shortages, but because of the shortages and some of the delays, it's just making it a bit worse. So, I'm wondering if we could take a look at a study or partner with our colleagues to see if there are opportunities so that the traffic doesn't back up down Williamsburg Road. Particularly, of course, it's going to be at those peak times when school begins and school ends, but once it's starting to back up on a major road like Williamsburg Road, I'd like us to be a bit proactive to see what we can do there. I know it's limited.
And I will tell you that I know that I've reached out, and we've had conversations with the county counterparts to do some traffic studies. I gave a list of elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools that are, that were also our high flyers, frequent high flyers before COVID, but continue to grow as well, that we've sent to them and have studies. I know that Courtney and her team are also heading out and doing studies at schools that we get requests from to take a look and see what we can do to adjust traffic patterns there as well. I mean, one of the issues, obviously, is ridership. I mean, some people have opted to take their kids to school, and a lot of it has to do with COVID and the Delta variant, but that has also put a strain on transportation as well because trying to get buses in and out. So, we're trying to coordinate that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we do appreciate the help.
Yeah, I know. Shout out to the Verona District. We are doing a fabulous job of working together and doing a very respectful job of thanking our bus drivers and doing what we can to sort of alleviate some of that. But to your point, there has to be a balance. So, if we have more folks carpooling, more folks taking their kids to school to alleviate, you know, the bus driver's stress, if you will, then what also happens is you have that backup, and particularly on schools that sit on those major roads that are hazards before COVID, let me just keep that real, there's just more of a hazard now. And so, the two that are at top of mind is definitely Montrose, and the other one is Fairfield Middle School. And so, I know that we have police officers and crossing guards to assist. My question is, is it possible to have that be on a more permanent basis because those areas were congested and hazardous before? COVID made it worse, but what is the process so that we can have? And I know that's a conversation between the county as well, so let me be clear, I am aware of that, but I am hopeful in sharing this, that those conversations would become more of a priority as we continue to move forward. The other suggestion is around creating opportunities and safe paths to walk to school. We do not have sidewalks in Verona Sandston and Highland Springs, and I think this warrants the conversation and working with our county partners on at least getting sidewalks or safe pathways so that families that live near the school have the option to walk to school. And then, thirdly, I want to talk a little bit about communication specifically to Mayford Elementary School, and that's going to be at the intersection of Buffin Road and New Market Road. I know several studies have been done, and based off of the results of those studies is that it does not warrant a traffic signal. However, I do think it warrants a bigger sign. Right now, there's a very small sign, I think it's about the size of this notepad that lets folks know that there's a school on the street. I'd like for us to take the opportunity to put a bigger sign there to let folks know that are on that major road of New Market, that a school does sit, you know, on that street once you turn the corner. So, if you could take a look at that. And then, lastly, I'm very excited about a mobile-ready app for our families. I think that's going to be tremendous as we move forward into the future. I know that Chesterfield implemented something similar. I know that Chesterfield implemented something similar not too long ago. Is what we're implementing similar to that or different?
It's, it will be similar, yes. A parent would be able to identify their child's bus in real time where it was located.
Okay. And I probably missed it, but did you give an estimate on when we think that would be ready?
Well, we would have to, like, once we get all the hardware installed and start moving forward, I mean, the recommendation would be to move forward and slow roll that out because it can be very confusing. And if you don't have the people that are properly putting in the information for bus changes, it can, it can make the, a, a bad situation even worse for a parent's concern.
I understand.
They're going to understand why the bus isn't moving and it's still sitting in a depot somewhere. So we just, we have kinks that we would have to work out and we would go through and we would like to slow roll it out, put it in a zone first, that is not having some of the transportation problems that, that we're seeing somewhat, some of the other zones.
Fantastic. Well, that concludes my questions at the moment and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogden.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard, for, for the update. And, but as you said, the Takahoe District and the Three Chopped District have more issues right now than some of the others. And I know Ms. Shea and I both get, get a few emails and you look forward to today when we stop sending them to you. But I, I do appreciate all of the quick response. It is amazing, the number of times that a parent has contacted me and I have, you know, sent that to you and it's almost immediate. And Mr. Ellis too, for, for responding late at night, y'all are burning the midnight oil to get this done and we, and we know that and appreciate it. But I, and I also wanted just to give out a shout out to Ms. Berry because I know that she has been helping. I have a couple of spots that I've been working with y'all on at Rivers Edge and at Twin Hickory with just making sure that the kids have safe access to school. And, and so I know the parents know that we're working on it, but I just wanted to, to thank you both for all the efforts there. But I, I mean, the thing is, is that we are competing again with everybody for people with a CDL. You can't ride down the road without seeing a truck on, that on the back of it said, "Looking for, for hiring." I mean, everywhere you go, you see CDL drivers being hired. And so I know y'all are working as, as furiously as you can to hire as many people. And so I'm really glad to hear that we have 50 people in the hopper. That's awesome. I know that'll make a big difference, but thank you. That's, that's all from me.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Ms. Shea.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. One of my schools on their marquee has, right now, all it says is "Bus drivers needed." And I'm like, that's an understatement. So, and before I get started, I just want to shout out Mr. Hurdle who runs Zone Four. I've never met the man in person, but communicated quite frequently over email and, and with my constituents. And he is so transparent with our parents about, you know, where our struggles are and, you know, doesn't try to sugarcoat it, just tells them this is what it is and this is what we're trying to do. And I, I think that has gone a long way with our constituents just to understand, you know, kind of the, the nature of the beast right now. So shout out to him for doing such a tremendous job. My, yeah, so I guess my initial question was about app status, but that seems to have been covered. I know in the meantime, some of our schools are doing some real creative things to try to communicate with their schools. I know Gaetan is sending out, using Facebook. And Takahoe Middle has a really neat Google dot bus board that they keep updated. So our schools all have some, some good workable solutions in the meantime. And then, would you mind emailing me all this stat you rattled off? I tried to write them down as fast as I could, but I know I miss them because we have, we have 32 open runs right now in Zone Four, I believe, which is, which is a struggle, especially when all of our drivers are already doing five and six runs. It is a struggle. So, oh, and then I had one thought. When Ms. Atkins mentioned the CD charts, and I know we're taking pictures of the buses, I don't know if our buses already have the numbers on the back wall or not, but if they don't, I think that would really help administration when they take the picture to know exactly what bus number it goes with.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Ms. Canceler.
Yes, I, I echo all of my colleagues' feedback and sentiments regarding transportation. And I just commend the whole department and I appreciate you, Mr. Pritchard, for managing this department and for doing your best, given all the emails and phone calls we receive that we then share with you.
All right, you should go to those fine people across the street at Central Office. They do an amazing job in those zones. They're just amazing.
Well, I thank everyone. So here's the thing, so I've heard some feedback from some drivers and they're illusioned or disillusioned, shall I say, because they feel they're doing these seating charts and some admins aren't even taking them to use them, nor are they taking the pictures that other folks are talking about. So I just want to share that concern because that takes irritation, irritation for our bus drivers to a whole new level. The fact that they're doing something that really doesn't seem to matter, but yet the seating charts really do matter because they're part of our mitigation strategy. So if I could just share that with you. And then the impact to instruction and, and just the extra, but most importantly, I know at the last meeting, I highlighted safety. I know Ms. Atkins hit on it today. And I know Three Chopped and Takahoe may be short buses, but I can tell you, we're short some buses and then some students in the Brooklyn District aren't necessarily riding the buses. And I've been extremely concerned about the safety. And I've asked for some safety, safety studies. Do you know how soon we may get some results from those safety studies that are going to be looking at track, traffic patterns and perhaps adding Safety Patrol or Crossing Guards? And again, to Ms. Atkins' comment, I realize the government side needs to be involved because that's Emreka Police and Chief English, but do we have any kind of timing on that?
I can.
Or, or any response to specific parking lot patterns that I know we've looked at? Like Glen Allen High School comes to mind. And any high school, actually all of our high schools where we've got student drivers, but specifically those on 45 and 50 mile an hour roads such as Highland Springs, Tucker, Glen Allen High School?
Yes, so absolutely. And to your question, I think related to safety impacts and traffic studies and all of that, so there, you know, are multiple factors here. Certainly what happens on school property and the bus loop, as you said, and how students are released, particularly where there are student drivers and then also pickup lines and any combination of those things. Of course, each school's designed uniquely as to whether there, how many traffic patterns there are coming in and out, bus loops that are separated from parking lots and so on. And I'll say our administrators have reworked and rethought those processes and are still actively doing that. So they're certainly dealing with what's in their sphere of control. As Mr. Pritchard mentioned, some of the things outside of the school property, when it comes to light cycles and traffic patterns and crosswalks are things that we have leveraged the support of our county government counterparts. And, and they've been tremendous in stepping right up and saying, hey, how can we begin to help looking at some of these scenarios where we're seeing the most backups, the most challenges? And then of course, our safety team as well. So we are acting quickly on each and every scenario, either we've known about or board members have made us aware about through constituents or constituents have made us aware about, aware of, looking at creative ways, if not through crossing guards, assigning additional staff to make sure that we're monitoring things like students crossing and directing traffic flow. So we, we hope to report back on progress soon. That, those are all works in progress.
Okay, thank you. I think that's just important to know is that we're continually updating things, safety, safety wise at each of our schools and with our traffic patterns, that it, hopefully, if, if it's currently a concern, it won't remain that way for our students and families. And then, Mr. Pritchard, you cracked me up in your presentation because you said student drivers, which is really, I just have to correct it, that is, it's our bus driver candidates, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Correct.
I caught that too, and I thought, well, you know, we, we don't have that CTE program yet where students become bus drivers, but you know what? Anything's possible.
I've only been in conversation.
But yes, bus candidates who are students or working towards their CDL.
Yeah, so I just thought I'd, you know, giggle and also note it for the record that, that you did mean our driver candidates. Anyway, you also.
I didn't have attorney clip, so I had to go, you had to go that route, so. But I was, I was admiring his, his final slide with the road with the question mark. That would have been appropriate too on mine, so.
Anyway, thank you.
Yes.
So you noted adjusting or looking at adjusting bell schedules and potential start times of schools. I, I support this as in some of, across my district, some of my schools with the late start time conflicts with perhaps a middle school or other traffic patterns. Do you know when we may learn more about this, either Mr. Pritchard or Dr. Cashwell?
Yeah, I think they've done a tremendous job studying this and we, we've also had the benefit of learning from a number of school divisions who started a few weeks earlier than us. And we've seen a number of cases where some time shifts has, have been made and it hasn't increased the ability overall to fix situations. But looking very specifically at particularly our elementary tiers and some of the tiers that could be adjusted, a school may be in one tier that's in proximity to a middle school, as you said, that's starting, there may be some adjustments there. They're also looking at whole scale opportunities to shift times by 10 or 15 minutes here or there across the board to see if that may make an impact there. They track daily the number of runs, when they're made, how they're made, what time they're made, and can actually run the numbers to see if they had adjusted the times at certain schools, how would that have impacted? Would there, would it have resulted in more on time runs?
And then lastly, recently met with my PTA presidents across my district, is anyone that currently rides the bus at risk of losing their seats? I know you're talking about updating, you know, bus stops that don't have any students currently at the bus stop, but differing, perhaps correspondence has been shared out with families that makes them nervous about, they may not be riding the bus currently as to the contact tracing concerns that they may have, but are they, are families going to lose their seats on the buses if they don't start riding the bus?
So I would say the, the answer is no, but I would say, as Mr. Pritchard alluded to, what we're trying to do is fine tune runs and stops. So it may be a stop that had been in place in your neighborhood is no longer. You might have a stop that's a little farther away. If, if there has traditionally been zero riders from a stop for the entirety of four and five weeks, it might be that stop is eliminated. Certainly if a student were to begin riding again and there was some sort of a hardship, they would work with our transportation team supervisors to, to bring awareness to that. A difference may be relied, related to things like specialty center transportation where you're opting in and there's not necessarily a neighborhood. This is a special circumstance, some of our special education transportation where you'd be opting in for a particular circumstance. We'd ask that families who are going to need that opt into that right away. And if there's a change, we would of course do our best to accommodate particularly specialty center transportation, but those are more challenging than the neighborhood routes.
Okay. I would just appreciate it. I'm glad we, we said that and, because I've heard from families who are perhaps on a second run and their children would perhaps miss it up to an hour of instruction, of their instructional day. So that is why they're not currently riding bus transportation provided by us, but they plan to if and when, or should I say when, let me not say if, but when our transportation issues are resolved.
Absolutely. And I think we're very aware of the routes where there are start, route pickup times that are later than the start date. And so that's certainly something they're thinking about when they're looking at ridership on those routes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Again, I'm not going to reiterate, but just say again, what my colleagues said as far as you and your staff, quick question. So we have 50 in the hopper, as Dr. Cashwell has alluded to. How many do you think that we need to achieve on time pickups for any payment service, bus drivers that we, you know, in light of what's in the hopper, what would you think that number would be?
I mean, we were doing, we were, we were making runs and we, we were still behind during normal circumstances with being short up to 50 drivers, but we were making it work. So if we could, we could get a workforce of about 60 to 65 people, we could almost get back to where we were with some delays, but not, not like what we're seeing now. I mean, we're talking about the normal delays.
So even with the 50, that's pending onboarding process.
We're still going to have some issues, but it will be, I mean, every driver we fold in makes it that much better.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Yes, yes.
I just definitely appreciate that. And that, in that kind of same vein, so for our transportation services for students with special needs and students with, at private placements, are we experiencing any delays or shortages with transportation services or drivers for that specific segmentation of the population?
Um, let me see here. I kind of anticipated this, so we, we have some. It's, it's, it's kind of spread out from the east end to the west end, but it's not as, it's not as wide range as it is on, on normal routes. We have some, yes.
Okay, so, so I guess we, we have shortages of drivers as well as.
Yes, because I mean, they're in tiers too. So if you, if, if they're working to go pick up kids and get them to, to a school at a certain time and then we are getting them to another tiered school and they're behind, then they're going to fall behind. But, but it, it is very small in comparison to the, to the rest of the bus fleets, yes.
Yeah, the routes are, are accommodated, they just may be late arrivals, as we've indicated before, but there, there isn't, no one's without transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, thank you, Dr. Ms. Pritchard. Last question, this is, has a, this is an HR question. I don't know if you can answer it, so Ms. Bowden, just listen, if you feel necessary, please do. So again, we're aware of our employing creative and aggressive recruitment efforts in order to hire qualified bus drivers. And so I noticed that on the pupil transportation page, as a part of the recruitment efforts, it states candidates for full-time and substitute bus drivers must be at least 21 years old, have a valid Virginia driver's license, be able to obtain a CDL Class B instructional permit or hold a CDL Class B license with endorsements in P transporting passengers S school bus and air brakes, pass a physical and drug test, and here's the caveat, and have no felony convictions. My question or my concern is related to the felony status, as she's getting up.
I'm going to move over to the side.
Ms. Bowden, as you come to the podium, are we limiting our recruitment to only individuals who have no felony convictions? Or have we expanded the pool of potential applicants to those with allowable felony convictions? In accordance with the VDOE under the law effective June 1st, 2020, a school board may employ an individual convicted of a felony or offense of moral perpetuity not defined as a barrier crime that does not involve the sexual molestation, physical or sexual abuse, or rape of a child provided that for felony conviction, fictions, the individual's civil rights have been restored by the governor.
So, yes, sir. Thank you for bringing that to my attention because that sounds like something we need to correct on the website. You're absolutely correct. The law has changed and now school divisions are able to employ individuals who have felonies on their record. Now, if the felony deals with driving, obviously we're going to look at that a little more closely. But in answer to your question, we are able to consider individuals who have felonies on their records.
So we, we definitely have to change to have no.
Yes, sir, definitely. And thank you again for bringing that to my attention.
Well, I'm, I'm just hopeful, again, I, I just want to thank you as well as my colleagues and Dr. Cashwell. And I, I'm just trying to research and find any loophole I can find to help us to, to increase the individuals that are eligible for employment. I think too often that statement, no barrier crimes, barrier crimes is, is what, what is an impediment is just those, so thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm really appreciative of that, so.
Thank you as well.
All right, well, that's all I have. Listen, again, Mr. Pritchard can't say enough, you know, we're in this together, all of us getting the emails and the calls. It was, it was funny, just real quick, my, my, my child, first, my child's first day of school had some bus issues and I was copying an email from one of the parents and says, and you wouldn't believe it, the chairman of the school board's son was, had an issue too. Yep, I'm, I'm, all of us are being impacted. Doesn't matter if we're a school board, superintendent, you know, we're in this together, we feel the same pain, but we, we're looking forward to the same resolution. So thank you, sir. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. And absolutely, we are in this together. I, I have a bus rider who has a pickup time later than her first period starts, so I understand and have been so pleased, though I know that her drivers have indicated they've gotten lots of kudos and they sure appreciate it when families and students are flexible and understanding of what is not an ideal situation that we're clearly working diligently to correct. So thank you, Mr. Pritchard. All right, that concludes items from the superintendent, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Staff, board members, is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Yes? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cancelo.
Yes, on behalf of the, on behalf of the board, I wanted to acknowledge appreciation for a Glen Allen High School senior, Purcell Jackson. The entire board was invited on September 7th for the unveiling of his September 11th memorial.
Awesome.
That he did in collaboration with Henrico County and Henrico Fire Department for his Eagle Badge. It really, we really appreciated the opportunity to attend the unveiling, and it was, you know, especially on the 20th anniversary that affected, you know, everyone. But just to acknowledge that this extraordinary memorial exists on Woodman Road at the Henrico County Division of Fire Training Center. So I don't know what access, you know, the public has to that, but just to acknowledge this collaboration of a senior of mine at Glen Allen High School.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancelo. Wonderful, wonderful announcement. Anyone else with any new business? Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, October 14, 2021, at 1:00 p.m., and a monthly meeting at 6:30 p.m. in the New Bridge Learning Center Auditorium. As always, the meeting times may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is adjourned.